Oh damn, of course. I had to censor that shit. I do because, you know YouTube.
Yeah.
You know, I'm gonna move this up here. So people can still see the text.
Yeah.
Here's the thing ladies and gentlemen, you guys don't fucking believe me when I say, "I had to censor that." Because in part, I think it was eighty-four or eighty-five of this game. When Riri was completely covered, by the way. She was just bending over. I got cla- I got striked for that. We got a strike. I was like, "What the fuck?" Heads whining out a running gag of the demonetized symbols here.
Yep.
I actually have something of you to ask today.
Sure, but put on your clothes first.
Damn it. Basically, I do work. I want you to watch me study.
We're a few days into summer break at this point. Today, Areal came up, came to my room with a, was studying on her mind.
Study.
Study, Areal. Clothes.
I hope I'm not being too presumptuous by asking for this.
Great, she's ignoring me.
Good. I got a nice view.
I'll answer your request once you put something on.
Oh. You won't let me avoid the topic, will you?
Hey, Areal assumes a me leading position to appeal to her, eh, to my softer side.
This is a cute little thumbnail.
Yeah. Arg.
Arg.
I say that all the time. I'm always just like, "Arg." I'm saying "arg" and "yarr" a lot.
Yar yeet.
Yeah, I've been saying that too, "yar yeet."
Weird a generation that won't let that word die.
Yeah, basically, I, my vocabulary has been turned to the three, to the, to the three Ys. Yar, yeet, and yeet.
I say yeet whenever I throw something in the trash, I'm like, "Yet."
Yar yeet yeet.
A yar yeet, a yar yeet when you throw something across the room, "Yar yeet."
Yeah.
Oh god, I'm gonna be saying yeet when I play Call of Duty: Modern Warfare. When I throw a grenade. I am getting that game. I am getting it.
Alright, hey, I, I might actually get it just to play, just to play. What are you getting it on?
Um, it, it's cross-platform across everyone, everywhere.
Okay, so I could probably get it on either Xbox or Playstation.
It, well, it works for PC, Xbox, and PS4.
Okay.
It's, it's multi-platform this time.
Yeah.
So I'm getting it on PC because I can record it.
I could actually probably play it on PC and I'd probably be a lot better at it.
Sure, okay.
Yeah.
We can record it, we can livestream it.
Yeah, if, if, eh, yeah, that'd be kinda pretty fun. That'd be, probably be pretty fun. I, you just hear him saying "yeet" in Skobe like the-
We can both stream actually.
Do what?
We can both stream it.
Yeah, if, if my computer will let me. It, it did not like Monster Hunter World, but then again, that game is really graphic and intensive.
But mo- with Call of Duty though, you can kinda turn stuff down.
Yeah, I'll just see, I'll just see if my computer will agree with streaming it.
Alright.
Uh, I don't mind seeing this, but I can't let her carry me away. Don't you, hey, didn't you tell me earlier you were totally okay with wearing clothes now?
But, but, being at home makes me want to feel so free. Even dogs run around nude with their collars off when they're home. Mine doesn't.
Well, yeah, well, you don't have a collar.
Yeah.
Eh, yes. Eh, especially, except they have fur, so that doesn't count.
Oh.
Areal glances down to inspect her body. She starts to wrap the ends of the bandages around her fingers and looks back up at me.
This is kinda like fur-
Gets dressed.
Oh.
Here clicking, the door shuts. She's gone. Sorry, Areal. This is for your own good. To be frank, e- even if she was clothed in the fan, I, I, I couldn't guarantee that I wouldn't want to pounce on her if I stayed clo- clo- in safe, close proximity. Uh, though... It's glitching a little bit. Oh, hi.
Oh hi!
Oh hi! Though I suspect Areal would appreciate the level of attention, wouldn't she? This still leaves kind of a bad taste in my mouth. I don't like doing this.
I'm back!
Okay, and it stopped glitching when she came back too. Oh, that was good, good girl.
Oh, you're in for a big surprise. You think I'm the same immature girl I used to be? Why are you getting loud?
Uh, she stretches proud pose. Chest puffed out, she extends her mo- her modest breast.
Unless she has some unlike, uh, she get a-
Yeah. Press, press it.
Even I can do it if I put my mind to it. I'd be failing you as your girlfriend if I put some simple friction on my clothes would get me hot. I want you to see a new side of me today. Oh god, that means more ways than one.
Hmm. Oh wow, you're really, I mean, you're really sexy for, to prove yourself today. What a, eh, what a come-at-me world attitude.
Come at me, bruh.
Alright, if that's how you want to act, maybe you should wear clothes from the start then.
No! I'm still most comfortable in the bandage.
Sort of like how people tend to wear, eh, tracksuits at home?
I feel targeted. Just like that.
Uh, Areal nods, content with the analog. Anal. Anubis. Anubis oggy. Uh, she seems not truly in a drag today, unusually in a drag today.
You said you'd grant my request if I put on clothes, didn't you?
Hmm, that I did. So what did you want from me?
A dick.
I recall, eh, I recall that she actually said it, eh, when, eh, when she was more fabric challenged.
She looks cute in that dress though.
She does. I was too focused on making her get dressed, eh, get dressed to listen. So I've already completely forgotten.
I want you to watch me study!
Huh, alright, study. But why? You know your grades aren't bad at all. They're pretty good actually.
Well, you're right, my grades aren't suffering. But I do wanna finish my summer homework early.
Uh, eh, ever the mo- the model student.
I would've got that done right away, so it's done and over with.
Yeah. Actually, I already knew Areal was the type to finish her homework as soon as possible.
That's me.
On the other hand, Emmy always impress Nathan until the last minute and then ends up crying to me for help. Eh, eh, as her brother, that makes me kinda sad.
So I was kinda hoping you'd let me do it in your room. Is that not okay? Don't give me those eyes, that's bullshit.
Ah! She plops down, eh, at my feet and looks up into my eyes. Oof. Everything she does is irresistibly cute. But it also makes me want to tease her a little. I don't know. I have a lot of power for it to catch up on.
Oh, don't mess with me. Don't make her cry.
Aw. Areal grabs onto the handle of my shirt, pouting and hugging.
Ren!
And the weather's perfect, airing out everyone she's seen.
Howdy, Sam.
Nuh. It, it's been, it's been a while since she called me that. In fact, it's been rare ever since we started dating.
Ren, oh, nice, eh. She got him.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, we got him.
Girlfriend or not, that term of endearment still grips my heart every time.
We're in the middle of summer break, so... I wanna spend my time with you. Oh. That's cute.
Yeah. Uh, I can't keep this up. How can I possibly tease her with, when she's just so lovable and honest?
That's a Yu-Gi-Oh card. Honest. That's a Yu-Gi-Oh card.
Eh, I hate myself for every try.
No, literally, that's the card name is Honest.
Yeah. I wouldn't be surprised. I feel dirty. Like the lowest wad of scum I can ima- imagine.
Oh no. Uh, I was gonna say it's like, nah, nevermind. That's going too far. It's gonna, it's gonna be too realistic for some of the viewers on this channel.
Yeah. Uh, I wouldn't dare act so, how, eh, call us the response to her saying how she feels so great.
I was gonna s- I was gonna say, "The hardest part of the come suck." I was, that's what I was gonna say, "Too real for some of the viewers."
Yeah.
They watch us after all.
Eh.
Come on, I've seen our search terms. Don't say, don't get offended. I've seen what you guys search. Nikopara sex scenes. That's one of our search terms. For this channel.
Oof.
You know why? Is I put that in our tags.
Yeah.
I think I get those views, baby. I gotta play to the algorithm.
Yeet. Uh.
Ugh. Is it glitching for you?
Yeah, could you move the text box up a now?
Please. Please.
Could you please move it so I can read it? So, with the footage, yeah!
Yeah!
Okay, fine, uh... I still can't read it.
Alright, I'll finish this line for you, then I'll reset the screen. It says, "Okay, fine, as long as breakfast comes first." What came first, a chicken or the egg?
Oh.
Oh shit. Really? Yay! Now I get to have you to myself all day. I'm so happy, I'm gonna be all over you later.
Oh boy. Areal wraps her face into my arm with food. I wasn't expecting her to be so excited about this. Uh, let's, let's just call this a perk of being the boyfriend.
Oh!
Aw! Oh. Would you care to explain to Areal?
Oh! That's adorable.
It is.
Like, that's very adorable.
Yeah, let me get a picture of that. Eh, new... Eh, wha- eh.
Wha- eh!
I was safe as-
As-
Okay, that's a valid, that's a valid name.
Hahahaha!
Cute. There you go, that's a valid name. Okay, I got it. Oh, fuck you.
Explain what? I've already read that.
Alright, I was about to say, "I did."
Oh.
I believe she wants me to watch her study.
The studying.
So what exactly eh, 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 has she chosen to work, preach, eh, or to eh, eh?
Preach.
Why exactly has she chosen to work perched on my lap? But, eh, the content smile, eh, and the contented smile on her face is certainly charming, I'll admit. How's that, how's studying supposed to work in this position?
Hey, good question!
Happy as she is, her work hasn't progressed an inch since she sat down. At least she's got the image, eh, eh, down, pen, eh, pen on, pen in hand, open in front of her.
Ren!
Yes?
I just wanted to call your name.
I'm just, I am just glad you're enjoying this moment, but you told me you were, you're going to spend some time today on your homework.
I know.
Do you though?
It's okay, I've got it under control.
Fortunately, the plate, the playful and totally not serious tone of her voice tells me otherwise. That said, I, eh, I've been scruffing her head with, eh, with my hand this whole time.
Oh, that's nice. I've always dreamed of sitting in your lap and having you pamper me.
You, eh-
Hahahaha!
You need to treat bigger then.
It's like, "You need to dream bigger, honey."
Yeah.
But that dream is more than big enough for me. What were you gonna say?
Eh, I don't know. My mind was blank.
I only ever thought, thought treatment like this was way too far out of reach for me. That's sad.
Aw.
But I always wondered what it'd be like in doing this stuff every day. I even went searching around for it on Gronk, or Gooko.
Grukel. Grukel.
Gronkle.
Gru.
Gronkle. Oh, Kronkle!
Oh, oh, eh, Gukle.
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 Eh, Guakle.
Gr- gr- what about Kronkle?
It's Gru.
Gruke.
Gruke. Now I really wanted to see your search history.
How about that? I even made wishes to Gomchan on one point. But that was obviously pointless.
Yeah. Because all gnome does is let you talk before ditching you.
Uh, this is heaven.
If this is what makes you happy, then by all means, do whatever you want.
Ugh.
And I'm letting her get attached to me? What did I do to deserve all this love from her in the first place? I mean, I guess I've actually done a lot with her. Thinking about, about it makes my chest swell a lot. You always seem so driven to get what you want, Areal.
Oh, that's not true at all. I wound up having to let you do things for me half the time.
Uh, those times don't count.
Uh, and that's one more reason to love, I'd love you, Ren.
Areal turns back to me and smiles like the flower opening to the sun. The image stuns me into silence. Uh, I'm glad that she, eh, that she focuses her attention on me like this, but it leaves me without a word to respond. In the end, the happiness runs out. I, it's worth the brief flash of embarrassment.
Okay, time to move on. Lots of studying to get done today. I can't just sit here and let you spoil me all day, but guess what? That's what's gonna happen.
Yeah. With that, Areal bends over and starts working on solving the problems on the paper.
What paper? I see a book!
Eh! You know, eh, go, eh, go get him, Areal.
Oh!
After about fifty minutes of diligent working-
Oh, that face is too cute!
Aw. Eh, Areal, eh, Areal's writing, writing hands stops moving in the middle of solving a problem.
Um, can I ask for help on this?
Um, what's up?
Just dirt. I don't know how to solve this one.
Oh, oh ho ho, let me see. I peer over Areal's shoulder to see that indeed, the one she's working on is a bit more challenging than the rest. We s- eh, we see this kind of, eh, kind of lot in the current school year, but not the one she's in now. Okay, so look, the, the variable here is defined by the formula, so...
The formula! Oh, I get it, thank you. Heh, and add that to the list of good things about having an older boyfriend.
Yep, that's not all, all I'm good for, trust me.
You've always been the reliable older brother type to me though. But now you're the reliable older boyfriend.
Hmm, there's, that, that has a much nicer ring to it. But I'll gladly show off a bit more in the future, if that's what you want. I don't mind doing that myself, but she might. I doubt she'll, eh, I doubt she'd like other girls saying, "Huh, cats, let me borrow him," or something like that. Areal defines my expectations.
You don't have to fuss yourself to look cool.
Hmm, what? You, you don't think I can do it?
No way, that's not what I mean! Oh, that face is too adorable.
Yeah, she's adorable. Areal whips her head around and brandily backpats.
It's not like I don't think you can be cool. I just like it when you're more relaxed around me, I guess. You don't have to fuss over seeing more mature or looking your best with me.
Areal cuts herself off for a second to choose her words.
Bat pedal, bat pedal.
Yar.
Yar.
Then she took a short breath.
Just relax and be yourself when we're together. If you can do that, then I'll be happy.
Eh, so she says, "Baby." Areal.
Suck.
The words reverberate through my heart. I, I don't have to fuss or see, overseeing, it's cool and mature, huh? Areal. Unable to hold back, I wrap my arms around her and squeeze tightly.
Haha, what's gotten into you all of a sudden? See, that's a, that's a pure face.
Yeah. Oh, I just, uh, felt a move with you a little more.
Oh! Heh, you, you're weird sometimes, Ren.
Oh!
But I'm happy to hear you say that.
Uh...
What is that?
There was only two rolls in there, I only had one. I left one, one roll for you and one cookie for you. I had one cookie, one roll for, for my dinner.
Get a cookie for dinner?
With my dinner.
Well, they said four dinners, like, "Bruh."
No, no, no. I have way more than that. Uh, Areal re- relaxes her button, lets, um, lets me get some air.
Oh. She's too adorable, you gotta give her, you gotta give her that.
Yeah.
Hit the button, fuck you!
Huh, Areal, uh, Areal's hair is barely brushing against my nose, so I bury my face in it for a moment.
Bury my face in it?
Bury my face in it. Uh, the smell of her shampoo.
Hmm. That's something an old person's thing, "Ah, the fresh shampoo."
Eh, eh, girls always seem to smell so nice.
Uh, Ren?
Ah.
Oh, Ren!
Ah, so soothing.
Um, I don't think I smell that good, do I? Did I put yogurt on or something? I'm not even wearing perfume today.
Meaning this is one hundred percent pure, unfiltered fragrance of Areal. I could get addicted to this. Over and over, I drink it in. I feel my chest filling with Areal.
Oh, I don't like that face.
Oh.
Um, I'm not sure how I should say this, but...
Hmm, do you not like this? If so, I have no choice but to cut my, eh, a rip, eh, a real, a real aromatherapy shorts.
I get, I get that joke.
I get it too.
Um...
A real aroma.
I, no, that's not it.
A real aroma.
Uh, but I just noticed with the position we're in... It's kind of lewd, isn't it? You did this for twenty minutes, come on!
Ah. Areal starts fidgeting almost purposefully. It's not really lewd, but if you will put your mind to it, it could be.
Have you seen her? Come on!
Yeah, I'm just saying in general. Not just for her, but just in general. I've been immediately considering a, a conscious of another regions. And right now, hers, hers and mine are perfectly aligned to get down to business.
Let's get down to business!
Let's go down to a funky town. Your turn dawn, aren't you?
Oh no, it's not the same as before. But it's just, I'm alone in this room with you. And with you holding me like this, I can't help but, um...
Her voice trails off, too shy to finish the statement. She hesitates for a moment, and, and to result, to result returns to her and she opens her mouth.
Girls have a sex drive too, you know! All we know.
Uh, we know, oh, we know. Yeah, I know. Riri and my sister already made that clear for me all long ago. They haven't, eh, they haven't all, all cursed all the time, though.
So yeah, basically, um, what I wanna say is...
Want to have sex?
Oh, don't just say it like that!
She har- hurls and pouts, and, and only, that, but that only puts a smile on my, on my face. How could I resist? That, eh, that is just too cute.
Oh, I can't focus on my homework at this rate. That sounds like a porno.
Yeah.
Damn, I can't focus my homework at this rate!
Who are you now?
You're an all-star.
Huh, so getting, getting in the way of her studies, is it? That mischievous impulse from before sparks back for life.
And of course, I wanna deepen the bond you and I have.
Hmm, I feel the same way.
You do?
I mean, to be blunt, I am, I am a guy. And of course, eh, I want to do it with you.
Heh, it's embarrassing we just say it straight like that.
But hey, Areal. I deliberately shift my hips. If she realizes I'm already willing to get it on, it won't be so as, it won't be as fun. You came here to study, didn't you? So you have to keep, yeah, so you have to keep going.
Why, but...
Call this a test of concentration. I'll be waiting, I'll, eh, I'll be watching to make sure you keep working.
Um, so, you're not gonna have sex with me?
Hmm, well, if you can finish the section, then you'll get a reward.
Oh, you're just teasing me again. But you like it as a thing.
Yes. It kills me a little to see Areal actually disappointed, but I have to endure. I want to see her get more and more turned on.
I guess I'll do my best then. You asshole.
Areal picks up the pencil again. Right as she sits back to work, I reach down towards her chest.
Oh, he's being an asshole!
Oh, he's being a massive asshole.
Yes, he is! Hahahaha!
Then I give, then I give him a good old squeeze.
Honk honk.
Ha, ha. Hmm, they're not huge, but they're the perfect shape to fit comfortably in my palm.
Um, Ren?
I see you're wearing a bra today.
Hahahaha!
What's, eh, what's up? Form another hard problem?
No, I'm fine, but, eh, your hand.
Focus, focus.
But I can't- But I can't just ignore it. You asshole.
If you really concentrate, then nothing should be able to tear you or attention away from your work.
Oh, you're making this so hard. He's being an asshole right now.
Oh yeah. If you can, if you can't finish your work, then we won't get, get eh, get it on.
At the same time, he's killing, he's killing two birds with one stone.
Yeah.
Easier said than done.
Ariel stiffens up and turns back onto the paper. She takes my word for it. If she doesn't finish, no sexy time.
No sexy time.
New sexy time. I watch for a reaction as I draw my fingers closer, eh, slowly across her skin. Hmm, so smooth. I feel, it feels delicate, yet somehow firmer than my own Japanese skin. Ah, there's just barely enough friction on my fingertips to let me know I'm touching anything at all.
Your fingers are on my breasts.
I trace circles around Ariel's breast to observe her reaction. She definitely likes it when, likes what she's feeling, but it's still within the limits of her self-control.
I can use the formula you told me about earlier to, um, solve this. Wait, what? This doesn't seem right, uh.
She picks up the eraser and starts to rub out her mistake. As she rubs out, I let my fingers slowly approach the center of the breast. I move just slow enough to keep her in suspense. It seems to be working. I keep the contact light, quick and fleeting. And overall, really eh, the overall result is something like tickling, but obviously more sensual.
I finally solved another one. I still have a bit to do, so please wait for me, okay, Ren?
Ariel steals herself and bends over to keep working. I act like, I, I actually have no intention of stopping. I'm not gonna work either, entirely. My main goal is just to reward Ariel for her help, for, for positive reaction.
The next one is, wait, this looks like the one before, but it's different?
Confuse slowly builds up in Ariel's mind. You can do it, Ariel. Irrespon- eh, irresponsibility, as it may be, irresponsible as it may be, I throw caution to the wind, lop a finger directly onto her nipple. With that warning, I give it a pinch.
That's in a shock through me.
Her body jumps to three inches from that. Eh, I keep my eyes on her, wi- right, eyes on the eh, writing hand, but continue giving my attention to her nipple between my fingers. Huh. Slowly, I extend my hand to eh, somewhere far more sensible.